We'll call the meeting to order. And do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Pick one.
Thank you. And the next item is the approval of meeting minutes. If you had a chance to review, that wanted to review. Does anyone have any corrections?
No.
I will abstain since I was not here.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
I'll second it.
The meetings are, the minutes are approved. And the next item is the appointment of chairperson. And so, I can, yeah, do you want to speak to this, Stephanie?
Yeah, so city code does require the appointment of a chairperson to serve for one term, and also a vice chair. So, city code does state that the chairperson chosen from the committee will serve a membership annually for one year, provided however that no chairperson shall be elected who has not completed at least one year as a member of the commission. So, tonight also, vice chairperson is to be appointed. The chairperson will act as the vice, or, sorry, the vice chair will act as the chairperson in the event the particular individual is absent from the meeting. So, tonight, the commission's requested to appoint a vice chair and a chairperson to serve the term of one year, ending in January 31st, 2021.
As I understand it, Sharon, you are not interested in being the chairman, is that correct?
Right, that's correct. I just feel that my knowledge of all the planning commission kind of ins and outs is vastly less than other people on this committee, and so I'd rather not be the chairperson. Happy to serve here, and if anybody wanted me to be a vice chairperson, that would be just fine, but I'm not comfortable being the chairperson.
We can't point this way, he hasn't been here long enough. I tried that already. So, the next question is, Wanda, are you interested in being chair, as you have not been in recent history?
I can do it. I would be willing to do it, if there's no other.
Anybody object to that?
No.
Then I would make a motion that we appoint Wanda to be chair.
I'll second.
Second. You need to vote. You need to call a vote.
I need to call a vote. And, um, do we, can we do that on a voice vote?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye. I didn't say aye.
You don't want me.
Okay, so then, uh, Wanda is elected as the chairperson of the planning commission.
Thank you.
And as for vice chairperson, would anyone like to do that position?
I would.
You would?
Sure.
Fantastic.
I'll make a motion for Glenn as vice chair.
Second.
And we'll have a vote. All in favor of Glenn being, Glenn Terry being the vice chairperson of the planning commission, say aye.
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 And all opposed? Okay, well, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
What a team.
Yes.
Tough election.
Okay, and that is effective immediately, correct?
It is.
Oh, really?
Or you can just hand her down the gavel for this meeting.
Okay.
You just didn't want to get tonight. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the, is the commission member interviews, and we have two, Daryl Lawrence and Jim Smith, and if they will follow Jack into, is Daryl here?
No.
Oh, if you could follow Jack into the room there.
Well, Daryl is going to be the first interviewer.
Okay, is he going to be first?
So, what will happen is we'll interview Daryl, you have the questions in your packet, and then once Daryl's completed, he can go in the room, and Jim can come out here and be interviewed.
Okay, welcome, Daryl.
Thank you.
We will start, and Tom, why don't you start with the first question?
Hello, Daryl. Why are you interested in becoming a committee member to the East Bethel Planning Commission?
Sure, I think it's a great opportunity to give back to the community and use some of the knowledge that I put into practice every day at the University of Minnesota, where I work with facilities. So, I'm responsible for about 880,000 square feet in terms of customer service and working with the people who inhabit the buildings, the research buildings. So, understanding their needs and understanding how you can work within set parameters to make things work for them, because if black and white doesn't necessarily always apply, and I think that there are lots of shades of gray when it comes to the planning commission as well, when you're looking at variances and individual situations. So, I think that I can marry my knowledge of building management and things like that in physical facilities with my customer service experience to help out the community.
Okay.
You touched on this a little, but do you want to add anything to what strengths and abilities you bring to the commission?
I think that I'm a good people person as well, so getting to know individuals and their situations, and once I build that baseline of knowledge when it comes to city and state statutes, being able to help them navigate those as well, and understand that even if the answer is no, that there can be a way to still work and make something work for them, find an alternative solution. I think that's something that I utilize on a daily basis as a strength, and I think that's something that I would bring to the commission.
Right, thank you.
So, what issues are you most interested in pursuing or promoting as a committee member?
I think just allowing things to work smoothly on the municipal level, as smoothly as possible. I've looked at some of the minutes, sometimes things aren't smooth. But, being able to help individuals get through those situations, and also helping to promote businesses and understanding where they fit into the logistics of the city, and how they can play into the experience for everyone who lives here.
Do you have any local issues that could place you in a conflict of interest situation, such as some issue that you would financially benefit that we would be adjudicating?
No.
And then before we end this interview, do you have any questions for us, or is there anything you'd like to add to this interview process?
I think my biggest question is, what do you think the biggest issue is facing the commission within the next year? What do you think is a hot and button issue that is bubbling to the top that is something that will have to be confronted?
I think there are a number of ordinances that have continually come under fire, for lack of a better word. Either they're not written right, or they are not written updated for the changes in technology, the changes in usage, the changes in a lot of different things, and we've been facing them and taking them slowly but surely and trying to, to do things, but there are so many of them.
Yeah.
And that's, that's one that, that is really a hot button, and what happens is a lot of times there are other things going on, and we don't necessarily get to them as maybe quickly as we would like to.
Sure, I saw that in the packet for the meeting tonight as well, just.
Yeah, there's a few of them on there tonight.
Yeah, doing some administrative work and making things align.
Anything else?
I would say that we have numerous businesses that would want to come here, or projects where we don't have a clear, because we've been going back and forth on various issues with their comprehensive plan as to whether it would be a good fit, or if it's the right location, or does it, how does it work in the balance of trying to retain our residential and rural feel versus, you know, what level of development do we want? And we've worked on that continuously for many years, but it still comes up as a thing when we have different big projects coming in front of us.
Sure, and I'm guessing that's a case-by-case basis sort of thing?
Usually.
Sharon, did you have anything?
Nothing.
One of the things about East Bethel is the fact that we have Coon Lake, and it's kind of its own little entity, a little city, and so the development issues there are different than the development issues on the north end of the city, and it's hard, it's hard to be fair to everybody and make everybody understand that they're not the same, they need to be different, and so there, there are different development challenges within the city in different areas, so, understanding that, it's a learning thing.
It's also enforcement and.
Right.
Code issues and.
Okay.
Anything, Tom?
No, I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay. Anything else for us, Daryl?
Nothing further, but thank you very much for your.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you want to head over across the hall, they'll bring Jim in, and then come back in, please, after that.
Okay. Then, Jim goes back out, and we vote, and then we. That's secret ballot.
Secret ballot. We'll just, we have paper.
Hi.
Hi, Jim, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. Um, we have a series of questions, and once again, we'll start with Tom on that end.
Hey, Jim.
Hi.
Why are you interested in becoming a committee member to the East Bethel Planning Commission? Uh, well, I don't know if anybody, or if all of you know, or some of you know, that I was involved with CST up there, and I was a big part of that and pushed it. I did the first petition, and I seen that, what concerned me is that, what could happen to our city? And so I got involved with that. Once I was involved, I mean, I met a lot of great people on that, and we all fought for that, because once we got into all the facts, that would destroy the north end of East Bethel. And we stopped it, and we fought for it. So, I'm concerned with what happens with the city, and I know there's a lot of good people that make decisions on here too, and I feel that I could add to that.
What strengths and abilities do you bring to the planning commission?
I got a construction background, I've been in the trades for 46 years. I'm also a real estate licensed realtor, and I've done that for 20 some years. So, I know how building works, and, so I got a lot of background and all that stuff, and the planning commission, I feel that's what their big aspect is on everything.
Great, thank you.
Jim, what issues are you most interested in pursuing or promoting as a committee member?
Uh, I understand that growth is important, but I agree with commercial business, that we do need it, and also that residential as well, but I like the rural part of it up here, so I kind of like, I don't know if I'm answering your question right, but I like it that way. That's why I actually moved back here. We moved out for like five years, and we lived in Andover, Ham Lake, and I used to say, Andy, and it's like, we came back here because we liked the rural part of it. So, it's important to me that I know growth is important, and we have bills that need to be paid in the city, like the sewer modern, and stuff like that, but I also think that we should be careful in what we do on everything.
Thank you.
So, did that answer that?
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Do you have any local issues that would place you in a conflict of interest situation, such as gaining financially as a result of something we adjudicate?
No, no, none.
All right, Jim, and before we end the interview, is there any questions or anything you'd like to ask us, or like to add?
Hmm, I don't know, uh, I think that, well, ever since CST, I mean, I think I've shown the people that do know me, I think I've been to, I've missed maybe a handful of meetings on the planning and the council. So, it's important to me, so I want to keep in touch with everything that's going on, and I also want to be a part of it. So, and I, when it comes to negotiation and stuff too, I do it all the time, but also, I mean, we need facts when we're making decisions, and I'm always open-minded or whatever.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have anything to add? Okay.
No.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know the routine, you go back over.
Thank you.
At this point, does anybody have any discussion they'd like to do out loud, or would you just like to go for a vote from here?
And what we can do is you can write down who you want and just hand it down, I can call it off too.
Okay.
It is Jim Smith.
We can call them back in then.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen both, for coming to the meeting and applying for this. The vote has been taken, and, Daryl, I'd like you to know that even though you didn't make it this evening, there are many other commissions. I know now there'll be an opening on the roads commission, because congratulations, Jim, you are the next member.
Well, this will go to city, this will go to city council.
Oh, that's right, it has to go to city council for approval.
This will go to city council on February.
February 10th?
February 10th, yep.
Okay. But there are many other commissions, and there are openings on, there are openings on roads right now, and EDA, and is that, is that the only two?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Is there still an opening on perks, or did they fill that?
That I'm not sure.
I don't know. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda, item 6.0, is a public hearing and variance request and setback reductions for 3742 Edmar Lane for Robert Taska. And we're to consider recommendation for a variance request for a setback reduction to build in addition to the existing home, existing home and a relocation of the deck. And, Erin, are you up?
Yes. The request action is to consider the recommendation for a variance request for a setback reduction to build in addition to an existing home and for the relocation of the deck by property owner Robert Taska at 3742 Edmar Lane, PID 353323210006, in an R1 single-family residential zoning, and this property is also located in a Shoreland Overlay District. Robert Taska is applying for variance for a reduction in setback for the construction of an addition to the existing residence, as well as for the relocation of an existing non-conforming deck. A building permit was already issued for the addition because the survey submitted did not accurately reflect the footprint of the new addition, nor the encroachment on the setbacks. A stop work order was issued until such a time that setback variances are granted by city council. This property is within the Shoreland Overlay District located on Coon Lake. This property is 0.29 acres. The maximum allowable impervious surface on properties within the Shoreland Overlay District is 25 percent. The proposed addition will bring the impervious surface of the lot to 22.7 percent. The property owner is proposing an addition to the existing home. A portion of the addition will be constructed in the same location as the existing deck, as shown on the attached survey. Therefore, the encroachment upon the 75-foot ordinary high water herein referred to as OHW setback is referred, or, is 3.7 feet. The addition will be setback 71.3 feet from the ordinary high. The request for setback reduction for an existing non-conforming deck does not meet the three-factor test requiring, required for granting variances, as the need to relocate the desk, deck is because of the proposed addition the property owner wants to add, and with the addition, the majority of the existing deck would still be able to remain as it exists presently. Consideration of a variance requires the planning commission to consider a three-factor test for practical difficulties. The first factor of the test is reasonableness, meaning the landowner would not be able to use the property in a practical way, or would like to use the property in a practical way, but cannot do so under the rules of the ordinance. It does not mean that the land cannot be put to any reasonable use whatsoever without the variance. For example, if the variance application is for a building too close to a lot line or does not meet the required setback, the focus of the first factor is whether the request to place the building there is reasonable. In this case, "To maximize the useful living space of the already small lake home within the given lot, keeping the same deck size and moving it two feet west to accommodate for the addition will not extend past the existing chimney and will afford us enough space for family gatherings," was the applicant's response. A staff note, "The chimney is allowed up to a two-foot encroachment per appendix A, section 11-1, measurements and encroachments, in which it states under subpoint A, architectural appendages extending two feet or less into the required front, side, or rear yard setback shall not be considered encroachments. Architectural appendages may include features such as eaves, bau or bay windows, fireplaces, cantilevers, and similar items. The deck presently conforms to the zoning ordinance on the west property line setback, but not to the ordinary high water setback. Granting a variance to move the deck, the 2.3 feet to the west as detailed in the survey, would be increasing the nonconformity. The denial of a variance in the case of relocating the deck does not deny the landowner reasonable use of the property, as the expansion of the house without the relocation of the deck would only require a portion of the deck to be removed and not the entire deck." I did speak to the property owner on Monday, so after the packet was submitted, and he did specify that they have plans to, if granted in the variance, that the deck would only be 16 feet, as opposed to the 16.5 as proposed on the survey, which would mean that it would be approximately, so it's 7.7 right now, so it'd be 8.3 feet from the lot line as opposed to the 7.7. So, it would only be 1.7 feet closer to the lot line than ordinance presently allows. But, and then the request for a variance from the ordinary high water setback from the addition to the home is reasonable, as the addition will be located in the space presently occupied by the existing deck, which does not increase the nonconformity of the property. The second factor is that the landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. The uniqueness generally relates to the physical characteristics of the particular piece of property, that is, to the land and not to the personal characteristics or preferences of the landowner. When considering the variance for building to the encroachment or intrude into a setback, the focus of the factor is whether there's anything physically unique about the particular property. In this case, the applicant's response is because of the location of the house, the septic and garage, is the only available space to build. Staff note, "The relocation of the deck does not meet the requirements of this test, as the relocation is due to the proposed addition by the property owner. Wanting to move the deck to maintain its current size is not unique to this property, as the vast majority of homes in this neighborhood have similar challenges with the setback requirements, as well as impervious surface requirements due to the average size of the lots." The request of a variance from the ordinary high setback for the addition of the home is unique to the property, as the septic drain field is located on the other side of the home. With the narrow lot and 10-foot side yard setback, the property owner would be unable to create an adequate addition through the expansion to the east, as it's only 2.1 feet from the setback requirement on that side of the property, and the existing house is nonconforming on the west side, as it is only 9.6 feet from the property line. The third factor is that a variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure would be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. In this case, the applicant's response is "The small addition will enhance the look of the lake home and better fit with the neighboring homes." The staff note, "There are numerous properties in this neighborhood that are legally nonconforming. However, there's no precedent to grant the expansion of a nonconforming use through the allowance of a variance for the relocation of the deck." Section 11-1, "Measures and Encroachments" lists what structures are allowed to encroach on setbacks across the city. If it was the intent for decks to encroach, they would have been included in that section. As the ordinance reads, "It is the intention of the code to disallow these nonconformities, so moving forward, more properties will comply with current setback requirements." A request of a variance from the ordinary high setback for the addition to the home does not alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, as many of the existing homes along the lake on Edmar Lane are nonconforming, including the resident neighboring the property to the east located at 3754 Edmar Lane, in which the house is setback approximately 72 feet from the ordinary high. A reduction in the setback from the ordinary high would not alter the essential characteristic of this neighborhood. Additionally, precedence has been set, as city council has approved variances as recently as 2016, to reduce the setback from the ordinary high watermark. Staff is requesting the planning commission hold a public hearing and recommend the following. One, recommendation of approval to the city council for the setback reduction to the ordinary high watermark from 75 feet to 71.3 feet, to allow for an addition to the residential structure with the conditions set forth in the attached resolution. Recommendation two is of denial for the side yard setback reduction from 9.4 feet to 7.7 feet for the relocation of the deck, as defined in the findings of fact in the attached resolution.
And this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, we, oh, would you like to come up here, please? State your name and address for the record, please.
I am property owner Bob Taska.
Okay.
And I would just like to.
You could state your address too.
3742 Edmar Lane, Port East. I just want to say about the deck, there was a big tree, if you just look on the survey, in the corner of the deck, it's over three foot in diameter, it's 90-foot white pine. We had it removed, there were some problems with the tree, first of all, it was getting old, two, it's too close to the addition, if we're, we're going to be putting this addition up, plus it, it just, we had a lot of big branches come down in the recent years, a couple on my deck, and one on my house, and it was becoming a little dangerous, it was time for it to come down. But that in itself took up about 25 percent of the deck in that corner, and it protruded out even another two, couple feet, two, two, two to two and a half feet. So, we always had that restriction down there. I'm also very compliant about the chimney, six out two feet. I didn't notice that the deck, the deck that was the original deck is 16 and a half feet. I personally will not be building the deck more than 16 feet, so nothing will be sticking out past 16 feet, so, we're down to about a foot and a half basically from the property line, and I have a picture showing that corner now, how beautiful it is, because there's no, that big tree was, and plus, it just didn't look right, but when you really look at it with the deck there, it really isn't going to take anything away from anything, and really, the chimney's going to stick out. The chimney is really close to that end of the house, it's close to the, the deck, it protrudes out. You see that before you're going to see the deck, and the deck isn't going to hurt anything really there. And we'll probably end up putting clear railings around it, because the deck looks into the lake, you know, and you want to keep your lake as visible as possible, that's what you, what you, what you pay for there is the, is the view, so, that's, it's not going to be any really railing to, I think we're going to be a clear glass railing all the way around it, so, there isn't going to be very much obstruction of views or whatever, I can't see it creating any problem. And the other thing is, you say two feet, you know, we could go back, get back to a 14-foot, but when I bought the place 10 years ago, I had four children, three daughters and a son, and then we added three son-in-laws, and then we, now we have six grandchildren at the age of five, and sometimes we eat a lot out on that deck, many of our meals, and we just need the room. I mean, I gotta fight for every square inch for my family, they need space. And it is kind of, she was saying about the addition, I, I used, I was an engineer, but I graduated as an engineer from college. I didn't really use it, because I got a bunch of businesses that I ran most of my life, but I spent a lot of time thinking about this addition and what I could do, and I kind of maximized everything, I know I'm kind of pushing everything just a little bit, but because of the septic and everything else, there's just nothing else I can do with the property, and I got these beautiful, bigger places on both sides of me here, I got this pinky little lake, and which I love, and the reason I want to do this is, I plan on having this thing for my lifetime, and hopefully, my family. hopefully, my family's lifetime, huh? So it's going to be in the family for a while. I like it here, I love, I love, I love the area, I love my neighbors. I did get, I did hear from my neighbors, ones, my next, the one right next door that, that would be adjacent to the deck, texted me from Arizona, said, "No problem," you know, the deck even at 16 and a half, he says, "Yeah, I have no problem with that deck." So, my neighbors, the other one on the other side wrote a letter, nothing, said, "Everything, everything looks good, go ahead for him." I didn't hear from my other neighbor, I didn't hear from any, anything bad about it from any of my neighbors, they all kind of like what I do there and how I keep my property up, so, hope, yeah, vote for it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing and move on to discussion among the Planning Commission. Does anybody have any comments, questions, requests?
Well, my question was, can we ask the applicant?
Can we have you come back up, Mr. Taska? Thank you.
Okay, so my, my question is just about the, the deck, you know, is it possible to bring it back in a little bit more? I heard that you're, you're going from 16 and a half feet to 16 feet this week, is it possible to, to bring it in a bit more, so that you're in compliance with the, the setback?
Well, the decking boards, the composite decking that I'm going to be using, some come maybe two-foot intervals, this, this brand that I like comes in 12, 16s and 20s, so yeah, I could cut a 16, and I lose my factory edge, you know, because I'm not going to probably trim it on the edge, because I want it to, you know, so it would show a little bit more, but yeah, we could cut it down, but it's just more room where, I do have a picture.
Erin, that red dot is his home, right? There's no way-
The, the, yeah, the red dot where it is, is the tree that was removed, so to the right of that-
So there's no way to expand that, where we can actually see what it looks like? Because when I drove by there, I couldn't see.
Yeah, plus with the snow, it was very hard to see.
Well, and it was on the lakeside, which didn't mean no good.
And at 16 feet, we're going to be six inches shy of the chimney sticking out. You know, you, you just, is it going to make much difference, is what you're asking it, but is it going to make much difference? I don't think it is. You know, because the chimney protrudes, and it's right down in that corner, where the deck is. The tree was a much more of a hindrance than the deck's going to ever be.
So this is where your addition is, and the deck's on the side?
And with it reduced to 16 feet, it would come to the edge?
It would come six inches into, instead of coming, we were, the 16 and a half would come flush with the edge of the chimney. So it'd be six inches in. Yeah, we can push it even further, right?
If you came in this niche, what would it do?
That'd be the house, that'd be, the edge of the house would be two feet, be a foot and a half, that's what we're asking for, a foot and a half.
Are you using all-
Because that's just sticking out two feet, 16 foot would be six inches in, so it'd be a foot and a half. Technically, you can build one eye to sand to the edge of the house, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we'd be asking for a foot and a half, to be the 16 foot, otherwise, I got to cut a foot and a half off the plank, which, is it really going to, you know, is it really going to change it, compared to the tree that was there?
So you're using all new material, not-
All new, I would reconstruct, have it in new.
Okay.
Matter of fact, there's also a well that, past the chimney, up, up the side of the house, is an egress window well that sticks out 32 inches. And a line of trees there, but that whole corner now, it's just, you know, it's just perfect visibility, there's nothing there, it looks pretty sharp.
Does anybody else have any other questions for the homeowner?
Your objective is to maintain the size of the deck at, what is it, 269 square feet? There's a reason you can't get, I'm assuming you're, you're within two inches of a perfect square, is there a reason you can't make it more of a rectangular, just to fit the requirements? Does that have an effect within the well that's within that zone? Are there any requirements there?
Need to go towards the lake a little bit wider?
Yeah, yeah.
The deck is already nonconforming towards the lake, we can't approve any closer to the lake because of that.
Sure, okay.
Anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Taska?
No, I have a comment, but not a question.
Okay.
This is one of these situations that are always coming up at Coon Lake, where something is nonconforming, and people wanting to have a variance, just because of the nature of these lots. And to me, there isn't anything unreasonable about the request as far as the usage, it's not going to encroach on anything, what we're constricted by is the terms of a variance. So it's, it's, I'm kind of conflicted in, I don't see an issue, just on principle, of how to live one's life out there, and what one can do, it's not encroaching on the neighbors in any way. So then it's, how can we accommodate that without running into issues about what the code allows or doesn't allow? And I'd like to find a way to make it doable.
See, I agree with you, lake, lake homes, it's a lake home, you know, it's, it's outdoor enjoyment, and that's what you got there, you know, it's not like a residential, it is a residential home, but it's used because of the lake that's there, and-
Right.
Deck is essential, I mean, it's an essential part of enjoying the lake.
Right, and there's a, there's sometimes people are asking for too much, you know, where it's actually, doesn't exactly fit in with the neighborhood, or like, you could be, you know, if you're asking for a 500-square-foot deck-
Yeah.
And it was, obviously, you could get by with something less, I don't see this one as being that, it's like a reasonable size for family gathering and whatnot.
I would never think of infringing on my neighbors, I really wouldn't.
So-
So that's why I'm just trying to be very, very reasonable, that's all.
So I'm just looking for how can we, or how can we do that, especially given that it's not going to be coming out with that reduction farther than the chimney, it's going to be less than that, and that's already, you know, that encroachment on the setback.
Well, and it's the definition of encroachment in our statute is what it is, that the definition of encroachment doesn't include decks, it includes chimneys and whatever else this reads here.
Correct, and Planning Commission, you can recommend approval of it anyways, stating, and what staff does is just drafts the resolution for it, but if you have your findings on why you think it should go ahead as approved, then you just state that, and we move it on that way.
Okay, well, pending another discussion, I'll craft a motion when we're ready for that.
It's true, council has the final say on this, so, and I agree with Glenn, it seems like such a minute thing, but on the other hand, if we, you do it over and over, in this one case, it's not going to make a whole lot of difference, but the next one, it might, and it's a tough, it's a tough thing, you know?
Right, and that's why I prefer that we do, deal with this on a case-by-case basis, and not, you know, just say, okay, we're going to set a bad precedent, well, we have reasons why this one is fine, and why another one might not be.
Well, and I think Coon, I mean, Coon Lake is exactly what we were just talking about. Everything on Coon Lake that we've, I mean, we've done some incredible variances for septic systems, because there was no other way to do it, and they needed to be upgraded.
Right.
And I don't, I personally don't see anything with this deck that causes it to be, you know, an encroachment, or a eyesore, or anything else. So, does anybody else have any other discussion? I'm going to take these two recommendations, each one at a time.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any further discussion? Okay, with that, I will take, you made a, do you want to take it for which recommendation? Recommendation one?
What was, what was one?
One is the water line, 71.3 feet from the water line.
For the addition.
For the addition, and then the second one is the deck, so you want to-
I just want to address the deck, I haven't really thought about the addition on the water line.
Okay. Can we do these out of order? Okay, Glenn has made a motion to-
I haven't made it yet. I just said I would like to.
You would like to come in.
I make a motion to approve the variance for the side yard setback for the deck, reason being that it is less of encroachment of space than the existing chimney, the reasonableness of the size of the deck, the fact that it is a deck and not a more solid structure, that it makes perfect sense for the use of the property, and it would seem, in my estimation, petty to have to encroach upon that just on a technicality.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, that will go to City Council for approval on-
February 10th.
February 10th. And now we'll go back to, do I have a motion for the approval of the water line from 75 feet to 71.3 feet?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we recommend approval to the City Council for the setback reduction to the water line from 75 feet to 71.3 feet, to allow for an addition to the residential structure with conditions as set forth in the attached resolution that was presented to us. Do I have to read that?
Okay. Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, that will also go to City Council for approval on February the 10th. Thank you for coming in. All right. On to item-
So-
Seven, which if I ever get down to it. Item seven is a public hearing and zoning ordinance revision, Section 10-15, driveway access and standards, Section 14, detached accessory structures, Section 22-3C, prohibited parking, Section 25, fence regulations.
The requested action is considering the recommendation for the revisions of the zoning ordinance to City Council. Some background information is that at the January 6, 2020 City Council work meeting, staff requested guidance from City Council on several ordinance changes to be made. Section 10-15, driveway access and standards, the fire code has additional requirements for driveways that are longer than 150 feet, 500 feet, and 750 feet respectively. The fire code is adopted in its entirety within the city code. We have in the past, recent history, come across driveways that are longer than those, and because it's not spelled out in the driveway code, but within the fire code, that it's being missed, and that the certain fire standards aren't being addressed in the new building, new home permits. So in order to increase public safety and safety for our emergency services, we wanted to make sure that it's addressed in the driveway standards as well. Section 14 for detached accessory structures, Minnesota Building Code does not require permits for structures under 200 square feet. In an effort to conform with this requirement for the ease of residents and contractors, one of the proposed amendments to this ordinance is to no longer require permits for structures under 200 square feet, instead of the 120 square feet that is presently required within the code. Residents frequently request larger detached accessory structures due to the way the breakdown of the lot sizes are handled within the code. In an effort to work with these residents without changing the intention of the existing ordinance, City Council suggested the possibility of a prorated system for properties that are near lot size cutoffs. However, it was acknowledged that an equation for building size to lot size would be needlessly complex for maximum square footage of a detached accessory structure. With this guidance, the existing table for maximum square footage was expanded to include prorated footage by quarter acre. This chart allows for property owners to build structures that are proportionate to the existing allowances and tensions of preserving trees and green space within the community. Section 22-3C, prohibited parking, I see that it is not in the write-up, but it had been. The city is presently having a significant number of code enforcement issues with semis being parked in rural residential lots. These aren't 40-acre lots, a lot of these are the smaller rural residential lots, and the way the ordinance is presently written, it makes it unenforceable in court. So when we spoke to City Council, they said that they were comfortable with, at the meeting, they, it was addressed that staff could attempt to come up with wording that would meet the intent, but also make it enforceable. So the proposed text that we have brought forth is to, it, it's very similar to what the existing text is, but it's just kind of closing some of those legal loopholes. Section 25, fence regulations, with more urban development and urban-sized lots being developed in the city, there's need for zoning review for fencing to avoid unintentional easement encumbrance. This has shown to be an issue in existing urban-sized lots. An additional issue faced presently is the obstruction of roadways at intersections. While the ordinance already addresses this, through utilization of a required zoning permit in R1 and R2 districts, it will be easier to remedy before the residents place the fencing and have installed it. Pool safety is also a large concern that's been brought up by several, several residents recently. There are requirements through the Minnesota Building Code for pool fences, however, it's pertinent for them to be added as a zoning permit requirement as well, for the safety of the city and its residents. Staff requests the Planning Commission hold a public hearing for the proposed amendments to the zoning code, and make a recommendation to City Council on the proposed amendments. Here's the driveway access standards, the language is just adding that it needs to meet the requirements set forth in the Minnesota Uniform Fire Code, as amended from time to time. This will prevent us from needing to amend it every time the fire code is amended. This is summing up the detached accessory structures with the square footage. Additionally, the Building Department requested that pole buildings over the size of 2,000, that the language be added, that they need engineered drawings, as well as the 14-foot sidewall height within the code potentially needing engineered drawings as well, due to the recently adopted Minnesota Building Code. And then here's the new wording for rural residential zoning districts for prohibited parking, so instead of longer than 24 hours continuously is prohibited, it will change to which is being actively loaded or unloaded, or which is being utilized to render a service not to exceed 24 hours in one calendar month, on a parcel of land within a platted subdivision, or in any parcel of land less than three acres. This is acknowledging some of the larger agricultural lots, because they need to be able to utilize semis, and we don't want to, the city's not looking to prohibit semis as a whole, but more to address the code enforcement issue in the smaller platted subdivisions. And then for fencing regulations, it's changing it to permanent fencing and adding the requirement of a zoning permit- it's changing it to permanent fencing and adding the requirement of a zoning permit, and then adding that all pool fencing needs a permit so that it is made sure that all pools have fencing. And then we did add exempt fence types, just to be very clear that we're not looking to govern gardening fences, and snow fences are addressed elsewhere within the ordinance.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments, or questions, or anything from the audience? Hearing none, and no one rushing us? I will close the public hearing. Planning Commission, shall we take these one at a time? Does anybody have any comments, questions? Anything to add to the first requirement, which is the driveway requirement? Do you have any comments, questions? I would exercise a motion on the first. You wanna do them all together?
All together, because it's in the zoning code.
Okay, we have to do it as one motion, so we can't break any of these, well, we could. Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on the detached accessory structure?
Could I see the language change on that one, the slide of that?
It's- It's huge.
Maybe that's not the one I was- Okay, yeah, that's, that's not the one I was, okay, never mind.
I can pull up the-
I can pull up the PDF.
Thirty-one.
Right, I don't think I have anything on that.
Okay, then we will move on to the next, which is prohibited parking. I have one comment on that, it's twenty-four hours within a calendar month. Is that a reasonable amount of time, that's twenty-four hours and thirty days? If they're unloading, or loading, like facade, or something? Is that a reasonable amount of time in a calendar month?
And we are open to suggestions right now.
That's why I'm asking, I, I don't do that, but it just seems like that's-
I don't know.
A very short, that's basically three days in a calendar month, and an eight, three eight hour days, three working eight hour days in a thirty day timeframe. And I don't know, three acre lot. Less than three acres. I know where I work, we get trucks in, and it might take us two days to unload them. You probably don't have the same issue, but it might take us two days to unload them, but of course, we're, we have a residential section and a commercial, so.
Where are most of the problems coming from then, with the code enforcement?
There are a number of them off of, so over, off of Viking, near where Tom lives in the subdivision north of there. If you know around that area that I'm talking about, there are also some on the west side of Highway sixty-five over up of like Rochester in the rural residential neighborhood that is, I wanna say, at one thirty-seventh, like around there. And we do have a number of them across the street, like, or across the board. I wanna say that we actively have about five semi case, related cases. This is coming up because one of them may, is in the court system now, and we've been advised, advised by the criminal attorney that with the language, that there's no way that it's enforceable, so.
So, there are residents who are parking semis, that drive semis and parking them in their yard for periods of time when they're not-
Yeah.
Out.
So, it's not an issue of loading and unloading, it's just parking because they live there and it's convenient?
Parking, doing maintenance, idling in the street, and there, there was a period of time around the holidays where I was getting several emails a day about the same semi, and it, it's really hard to have to tell the resident, I understand why you're frustrated, but we can't. Like, we've already pursued this as far as we can go. So, it, it is important to a number of residents in the city, which is why we wanted to address it.
In buses, are you including when somebody was to purchase a school bus and convert it into just a vehicle that they use?
If it's converted into a recreational vehicle, that's under a different portion of our ordinance.
What do you think, guys, twenty-four hours good enough?
I don't see that as, as real restrictive. You mentioned the case Assad, you know, that happens once, you know.
Season, twice a season.
And, and other people that get semis like us, or, or you, we're kind of exempt from this anyways.
Correct, those are much larger plots of land, I mean, these are all restricted under three acres, so these are really small acre lots, actually.
Yeah, it's not like a home business that is having a semi come up every week with-
Correct.
Stuff.
Okay, with that, it sounds reasonable.
All right. That's, anybody else have any other comments on that one? All right, what about the fence regulations?
What is a certificate of compliance, what was, what is the process for that?
That was assuming that residents would come back and pay essentially for a permit after the fact, and have the building official or inspector go out to take a look and make sure that the fence met our ordinance.
Is there a difference in the fees for that versus a zoning permit?
Yes, so the certificate of compliance is actually fifty dollars on our fee schedule. The proposed zoning permit for the fence would be fifteen.
Fifteen dollars? So, it's less for a zoning permit?
That, that's the propos- the proposal that we made to council. I, it, again, it's up to what council would approve, but that's what staff deemed would be appropriate at this time.
So, if they get a zoning permit first, they pay fifteen dollars, but if they put the fence up and have to get a compliance certificate, then it's fifty dollars.
We've had one property get a certificate of compliance for fence, and the time that that has been established.
So, I'm not familiar, because I don't have a fence. Is everybody in the city who's put up a fence having to have had a certificate of compliance?
Only in the R one and R two zoning districts.
But they are, that's what they've been doing if they put up a fence?
Theoretically, yes.
But she's saying she's only had one.
Because code enforcement is only done on a complaint basis, it has not been addressed.
So, there are a whole bunches of fences that-
Right, because I, if I were just, if I wanted to put up a fence, it wouldn't occur to me that I'd need a permit, it seems like such a basic thing.
We are finding that up in Whispering Aspen, there are a number of fences that are going up on corners, and they are not meeting the requirement of four feet in the front yard. So, there's a six foot fence around a corner, and with snow plowing and all of that, it is creating visibility issues. So, that, that's a large reason why this is coming to- Oh, there, there's about an entire street in that same area where the, all of the neighbors have placed their fences in the drainage and utility easement. So, if there were any issues, Public Works, or the, just whoever is responsible for that easement would have to go in and take all of those out, which would be a huge cost for the residents as well.
And how are we proposing to let people know that?
I was just gonna address that to it. Would be possible to put something in the newsletter.
I've already got a draft ready for the newsletter if this does pass. Also, if it passes at the Spring Town Hall meeting, that can be brought up to residents.
I think that's a good time to do it, if you're doing a change, at least you could kind of announce a change to the fence policy.
Or to all of these, as a matter of fact. Because I know there's a lot of pools that don't have fences too.
Really?
Yeah, you mean all of the fences, not all of these changes.
Yeah, now all of the types.
We wouldn't have room, I don't think.
So, in a sense, these are being initiated because of, again, certain case scenarios, small, small acreage lots are driving the entire city to have a regulation, a permit.
That's why it's only gonna be in the R one and R two zoning district, yeah, it's, it's not for rural residential.
I like the fact that the permit is less than the compliance one. Anyway, that answers the questions I had.
Okay. I would entertain, is this a motion, or just? Okay, I would entertain-
Public, public hearing.
Wait, no, we already had the public.
And is there any further discussion on these? Okay, I would entertain a motion to amend the proposed zoning code.
I'll make a motion that we, excuse me, I meant the zoning text amendments, section fourteen detached accessory structure, and section twenty-two dash three C prohibited parking, as presented by staff.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did that motion cover the fences?
I was gonna say, did that cover everything, that's what I'm looking back at. Did it?
Can we amend the motion to include?
Title of the, of number seven, so.
I think we need to-
Should've covered it all.
amend the motion to include fences? Do you want to amend your motion, your motion to?
I thought that was all included.
Do you have section twenty-two dash three C prohibited parking, and section twenty-five fence regulations?
Yes.
It's, okay, does it need to be specific? Because I just went with numbers, with what it says on number seven, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you wanna take page, page twenty-seven and, and maybe amend it to?
Pages twenty-seven to forty-three, does that help?
Page twenty-seven and just, oh, she read that. I think we need to amend it, Cherry, to include the detached accessory, or-
Sure, I'll amend my motion, motion to include the section twenty-five fence, is that what was missing?
Second?
The seconder.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your work on all of those, it's a lot of effort.
Lot of work. All right, we are to back to the beginning. We are at number eight, which, we will welcome Mr. Harrington, who is our liaison for twenty-twenty, and thank Suzanne for her liaison work last year. So, Tim, city council report, please.
You just gave it to, you're good, you always just did it all for me. Before I start my report, I just wanna say, thanks for everything you guys did in twenty nineteen. It was a busy year in the city, a lot of projects got done. And twenty-twenty, looks like it's gonna be the same way, so I think you guys are gonna be busy again in twenty-twenty, but thanks. First of all, like, the first thing is, we approved a memorandum of understanding for the Eldridge project on the east side. And we had a discussion on the reserve capacity loan, you know, that's, that's one with the sewer and water. We, we have an opportunity here probably around twenty twenty-three to, to pay that loan off, be about somewhere in the market of two million dollars. It just depends on when we come up with the ERUs, you know. Sometime in this, we're not gonna be able to keep up with the ERUs, so. I think it's around twenty-two, twenty-three that we'll have an option. And then we can, with the money from the existing, or the new buildings up there, hopefully we can pay the reserve loan off in cash instead of bond, I'm not a big bond person, so. I'd like to see the money that we raised from the sewer and water down there, pay that, pay that off. And I've got some dates here for you, first one, February eighth is game day, next door, from twelve to six. What that is, is Mr. Pizanz is buying a bunch of games, and he's trying to get people more involved in the city. You know, come in and play games, and maybe have a conversation, see if we can get some more volunteers, you know, to do things in the city here.
How was that advertised?
I, is it on our social media?
It's on the message board, I believe that it's scheduled to be on a Facebook post, and it is looking, it's on across the-
If not, I can find out, we'll get it on the reader board, we'll get it everywhere, so.
Was it in the newsletter, I think it was in the newsletter too.
I just looked it up, it's not on the back.
It's a good idea, to bring that.
And then, April eighteenth is the pet clinic at the ice arena. April twenty-fifth is the spring recycling day. The Spring Town Hall meeting is April twenty-third. We have Arbor Day the twenty-fifth of April, and our Board of Equalization and Taxation is April twenty-seventh. And that's here at City Hall. And that's all I've got, unless you, somebody has any questions.
So, what, what's the memorandum for Eldridge?
Memorandum of Understanding with the Eldridge.
Yeah, where do we have that?
You know, I don't, Stephanie can explain it, but I think it's, you know, the city wants certain things, and Eldridge wants certain things, and that's why they kind of drop a understanding that we will be responsible for what we have to do, and they're gonna be responsible for some certain things in that development, I might be wrong.
That's exactly it, yeah, so, and what it did, it just gave dates that the, the city, I believe it's sometime in June, we'll start the utility projects, and by fall, we'll have the roads in. It's just a, a better way of a handshake with the developer, saying that we're serious about it, and they're serious, and we're gonna meet in the middle and, and work together with it, is what it is, but it's, it's moving forward.
The only thing that'll hold us up is if we don't get that MINDI grant. I mean, you know, it's a four million dollar project, and we can't, we can't do four million, so. We're hoping MINDI comes through with the three point two million dollars, that's the only thing that would kind of hurt us, so.
And it's looking, it's looking hopeful, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it looks good, let's put it that way, it looks good with MINDI, so. They, they got us once, they better not do it twice.
Yeah, soon, I know it's soon.
It's soon, thank you.
Yeah, I think sometime in February, isn't it, that they're supposed to let us know?
Yes.
And that's all I've got.
Anybody have anything else for Tim?
I have, no, not for Tim, but I have other business.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
And now we will move to other business.
All right, I have good news. Cambie Hills of East Bethel, that wonderful long building being built at nine hundred, one hundred and eighty-ninth avenue between Jackson over by our saviors, is finally going to be finished and ready for occupancy. We will be in there on Monday, March second, training and orientating staff. For to, I say we, I am the office manager for Cambie Hills. We are planning a public open house and ribbon cutting ceremony. As of today, I, well, the scheduled date right now is March twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday. Details about timing and the ribbon cutting and tours will be made public. We wanted the residents of East Bethel to come and see us. They've, you've all been very supportive of us, we really appreciate it, and we want you to see what's going on in your city. So, we hope to have tour times into the evening, so people on their way home from work can stop by and, and take advantage of that, so. Like I said, we'll, we'll get that out as public as we can get it, so everybody knows, thanks.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I know, it's exciting.
March.
Finally.
I have a question under other business, the comp plan, are we done with that? Oh, she laughs, that's good.
We're getting there, no, very close, today actually I had a discussion with WSB. City staff is going to take the comp plan from here. It's almost ready to be submitted to the Met Council again for review. So, I'm hoping within the next week or two, I can get it to Met Council for the next review round.
Good, good, anybody else have anything else?
I do.
Oh, Erin.
So, in other business, so, on February tenth- So in other business, so on February tenth, along with the ordinance revisions that were supplied tonight, one of the other things that is going is a chapter seventy-four ordinance revision for utilities and it is for septic holding tanks. State statute requires septic holding tanks to obtain a variance, so under that we will be amending the variance process solely for septic holding tanks as it is not a planning and zoning function. It is purely building code, it is purely for state statute, so instead of holding the public hearings here, in an effort to shorten the timeframe for residents to get septic holding tanks in because they have such a narrow window for installation, we are proposing to move it solely to city council, so.
And we've done a few of those in the last year.
And it's likely that we'll be seeing a number more of them just because of the aging infrastructure out there, so.
Another cool age.
Cool.
Interesting thing.
Don't worry about our neighborhood, I mean, it's, it's getting old.
Anybody else? With that, I will take a motion.
To adjourn, I'm, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
That's not an aye.